All right, everyone, welcome. Welcome. It's a little bit past six, so we're going to start. So let me introduce myself. I'm Ron Noda. I'm the Director of Development Services for the City of Los Alamos. We have behind me Tom Oliver, who is our Associate Planner. We have Leslie Roseberry here, who assists the city as our consultant. And we have Nicole Christ here, who works for Terra Nova, who's assisting the city with our Housing Element. All right? So I just want to let everyone know that we are video recording this tonight. And so we're going to be able to place this video recording on our website, probably in the end of this week or hopefully next week, okay? So the Housing Element Updates provides goals, policies, and actions to plan for existing and future housing needs for all segment of the population. In addition, the Housing Element Updates identifies potential sites to accommodate the city's RENA allocation numbers for this cycle. A little background if you're unfamiliar, but California state law requires every city and county to have a housing plan. Including in the housing plan is a predetermined, what they call fair share allocation of housing that must accommodate the various income levels in the state during the designated planning period. The City of Los Alamos during this planning period, which we call the sixth cycle, is required to plan for 769 new units for the planning period of 2021 to 2029. Again, the sixth cycle, 2021 to 2029. This allocation was determined through a process, again, called the Regional Housing Need Assessment, or RENA, R-H-N-A. Cities and counties in Southern Californias are required to plan for over 1.3 million housing units. And of October of 2019, the State of California directed the Southern California region to begin the planning of that 1.3 million units. And so each city was given a number, the distribution. And that distribution was accomplished through an organization called Southern California Association of Government. We call them SCAG. And after this lengthy process, SCAG distributed the RENA numbers to cities, and Los Alamos received our number, which again is 767 units. I want to mention that Los Alamos did enter into an appeal process with SCAG, but we were denied any revision to our RENA numbers that was given to us. So tonight, the Housing Element Workshop is requesting assistance from you, the residents, to determine how and where to plan for these housing units that, again, have been allocated to the city. The update to the Housing Element is to design, plan, and strategize to locate possible new housing. Again, I want to reiterate, you will not see a four-story building going up on the corner of Los Alamos and Cotella like tomorrow, right? Again, it's planning. It's a guideline for property owners, okay? I want to mention that the city is stuck between a rock and a hard place. On one side, the rock being the state mandate, right? About saying, yes, you need to plan for the 767 units. And then the hard place, of course, is the residents and trying to keep this small-town neighborhood or community that we all have grown to live and love here in Los Alamos. All right? So again, before I hand it over to Nicole, who will lead us through this PowerPoint presentation, I want to, again, emphasize that this meeting is being recorded. And I would like to go over a few guidelines for tonight's meeting, right? So if you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, and either Tom and I will call you up to the podium. Please, let's keep it one person speaking at a time. Please keep your comment brief. And again, we ask you that you respect everyone's opinion here tonight, okay? So again, I'm going to pass it over to Nicole.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Christ. I'm the city's consulting firm for the Housing Element Update. And Ron has summarized a lot of what I was going to summarize, but we'll get started with the concept. There we go. You have several mandated elements in your general plan, and the Housing Element is one of them. The Housing Element is the only element that the state gets to review and approve. All other elements of the general plan are approved at the local level. But the Department of Housing and Community Development certifies all of the housing elements to assure that they comply with state law. It's important, and Ron alluded to this, it's important to know that a housing element does not require that the city build these 767 units. It requires that we facilitate and eliminate constraints for private development to build these units. Ultimately, the market and the availability of funding will guide the growth, whether it occurs or not. Historically, the last RENA allocation that the city had was very small. They were very small all across the state. Everybody expected a large increase with this cycle. It was... Los Alamos is small, and for its size, Los Alamos got a relatively low RENA. I'm working with cities of similar size that have renas that are 1,500 to 3,000 units. So... And in case you're wondering, neither the state nor SCAG care whether or not a community is built out. That is not... That does not figure into the way that they allocate. So I'm going to go through some brief statistics, the basis for the analysis that we do for the Housing Element, and talk a little bit about our inventory and the sites that we're looking at for development, because we do have to identify them. And then the purpose of this is for discussion and comment, so I'm going to try to be brief. You have a population of about 11,500 people with a very slow growth rate. In the last 10 years, you increased by 89 residents. And SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, has predicted a 2045 population for you of 12,300 residents, which would be an increase of 762 in the next 25 years. Forty percent of the residents are between 25 and 54, and 30% of the residents are 55 and older, which is the fastest-growing segment in terms of the census numbers. You have 48% of the population that works, 5,500 people, and a 6.3% unemployment rate. That's the April number for this year. Your labor force has shrunk substantially from 2010, where it was 6,500 roughly in the labor force, to 5,300 in 2021. The county median income in Orange County is just over $98,000. The city's median income is a little bit below that, at almost $89,000. There are a total of 4,437 housing units in the city with a very low vacancy rate. You have 42, almost 4,300 that are occupied housing units. Those units are occupied by 4,092 households and an average per household population of 2.63 people. The city is... Has more renters than owners, and at a percentage rate that is almost exactly the flip of Orange County as a whole. So you have 1,739 owner-occupied units, which is 43% of your housing units, and 58% are renter-occupied, and the county is just about the opposite of that. You have a much higher housing value than the county median at 761. The Orange County median is 679, and that is a 2019 number, so those numbers are probably low at this point, since most markets have seen significant increases. Rents in the city range from 1,289 to 2938 for a four-bedroom. In terms of housing needs, which is what the state wants us to focus on, we have 48% of renters who spend more than 30% of their income on rent, and 26% of owners who spend more than 30% of their income on rent. The 30% is a federal standard. It's considered to be the appropriate amount of money that a household should spend on their housing costs. You have relatively low overcrowded units, with only 134 renter-occupied units being overcrowded, and 33 owner-occupied units being overcrowded. That is also a federal standard. The HUD standard for overcrowding is more than 1.1 person per room in a house. No one is exactly sure where that number came from, but that is the standard that we have to operate under. There are 1,165 senior households in the city with a median income of $60,000, which obviously is considerably lower than either the city income or the county median income. And 39% of seniors make between $25,000 and $75,000. So a large portion of the population, of that population. There are 18% of your female-headed households. That's another special-needs population that we need to look at, that live below the poverty level in the city. We have 1,039 disabled residents, almost half of whom are seniors. And we have 575 extremely-low-income households. By definition, an extremely-low-income household is one that makes 30% or less of the county median, so 30% of $98,000. As Ron indicated, we were assigned a regional housing needs allocation, RENA. The state established the projected population growth for the period from 2021, October of 2021, to October of 2029, which is the planning period we're currently planning for. And they then distributed those numbers across the state to all of the regional organization. And we are in SCAG's jurisdiction. So SCAG, as Ron indicated, was assigned a total of 1.3 million people, which is what the state believes will be the growth between now and 2029, and distributed that 1.3 million people amongst all of its about 100 jurisdictions, based on a combination of existing growth, projected growth, employment, access to transit. It's a very complicated methodology that few people understand. We were assigned a total of 97 extremely-low-income housing units and 97 very-low-income housing units. A total of 119 low-income housing units, 145 moderate-income housing units, and 311 above-moderate-income housing units. An above-moderate-income household is one that makes 120% of the county median or more. So not quite half, but close to half of our allocation is for what most people would think of as market housing, housing that will not require subsidy. In Los Alamos and Orange County in general, for the moderate-low, very-low, and extremely-low, those housing units will require subsidy. So the state requires that we distribute our housing units and identify sites for them. And so we have done a first pass at our inventory, which is a required component here. And you're going to hear a little bit later about the Town Center Plan and the status of that plan. And you'll see that a number of units have been assigned to the properties in the Town Center Plan, and they're distributed so that they... The city will need to include what's called an inclusionary zoning program to allow those units to be constructed on those properties through the planning period. So if a developer or a landowner wishes to build on one of these properties, they would need to meet the numbers that are shown here. And in addition, we have two sites that are... Does this also include a pointer, Tom?
Yes.
Is that the red button?
Yeah.
Okay. Although...
See it on...
You won't... That's... Yeah. There are... The Arrowhead site on Cotella has also been identified. There are four lots there, and one of the back lots has been identified for affordable housing, as well as a site at the very southeast corner of the city. You can see the little yellow box at the very south end of the city, also four units in our inventory as well. In terms of policy, there is not going to be that we see a substantial change in the policy direction in the Housing Element. We have a number of updates that we need to do to meet the changes that have come around for state law, everything from density bonus to emergency shelter parking requirements that need to be included in the policy program. So there will be some zoning changes that need to be done. We also expect that in order to reach the density for, in particular, those two sites outside of the Town Center neighborhood, that we'll need to create a new zone for the city that will, at this point, we're calling R4, since you have an existing R3, that would allow a density of 30 to 36 units to the acre to accommodate the more intense development that would be needed to meet the need. And then the Town Center Plan is including densities that are up to 60 units to the acre, and that would be a modification to the Town Center Mixed Use Zone that would occur after the Housing Element is adopted. And we also have to include some programming for the state's current pet project, which is accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Those are units that are built on... They can be built on multifamily lots, but are generally built on single-family lots and are secondary units. 10 years ago, they would have been called a casita or a mother-in-law suite. They're now called accessory dwelling units, and they have provided more affordable, although not restricted, not deed-restricted, more affordable housing in many communities. And so the state is looking at that as an opportunity for local cities to expand their housing inventory. In terms of next steps, we will provide the draft Housing Element for public review for two weeks. We'll be submitting it to Ron and Tom for review first, and then it will be posted on the city's website for comment. We'll then submit it to the Department of Housing and Community Development. We expect that that will be a two-review process. I've never seen a Housing Element clear the first time, but they will have the ability to make comments and tell us what they'd like us to change and add. And after that process, the Planning Commission will hear it first and consider a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council will, just like any other element of the general plan, will adopt the Housing Element for the next planning period. And that concludes my comments. We're here to take your comments, questions, recommendations for what you think the city should do for the next eight years. And again, I need to restate that the city needs to facilitate. The city does not need to build these units. That's an important distinction.
Okay, so we're going to open it up for comments. Please raise your hand and approach, sir, right here in the front. Go ahead. Yes?
Thank you. Good evening. Good presentation. My name is David C., and I'm here representing a property owner in the City of Los Alamos. The property is at 4181 Green Street. Have a few questions for planning staff. It's currently developed with a preschool. And although there's not a development being proposed now, we have been carefully tracking the Housing Element process, just to see how it affects the property. So my question for planning staff is, it's zoned R3 now. Is that identified for R4, that neighborhood? Or is that intended to be R3 still? Green Street?
No, I believe... Oh, yeah. I believe that it's R3 right now. I don't think it's community facilities, which is the only other option. Only our parks in that area are. So it's R3. It's not slated as part of this plan so far, but that's up to the public as well. It's not slated to be R4.
Okay, thank you.
Or a higher density. And, you know, so that's what you would be looking at if you were... The R3 standards is what you'd look at.
Okay, thank you. And I've been communicating with you, Mr. Oliver, and you were very responsive, very professional. Thank you very much. So I have two requests for the city. One is, we would like you to include that property on the Housing Elements Opportunity Site List. I believe there's an underutilized site list or opportunity site list, so we respectfully request that you include that, because we do believe there's opportunities for development on that site. And then number two, the general plan is public facility right now, which we do not believe matches the land use. So as a cleanup, we would ask that the city amend the general plan when there's a citywide amendment effort to multiple-family residential. We believe that would be a cleanup, and it would be suitable for the site, so that would be our two requests.
Okay.
And that is it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mark DeBolt, a question regarding the proposed zoning changes or amendments. What would that look like? Is that going to be like an overlay zone over, for example, the Arrowhead property? Or for the properties that are included in this, from what I read in the, you know, in the handout that we had? Let's just say areas south of Cotella, from the Boulevard, Los Alamos Boulevard going east until you reach the R3 zone, you have properties in that are currently zoned in an office zone, but have a designated housing. I mean, in looking at this Town Center Development Plan or the strategic plan that we have, okay, it's designated for housing, which is the broad-term housing. So how do you envision that zoning? What would that zoning look like? Is it going to be an overlay zone so that the people in the underlying zones are not affected and end up becoming, you know, nonconforming, legal nonconforming, which could have other deleterious effects on insurance for their buildings, you know, a whole host of things? I guess that's what I'm trying to get... I understand the need to plan, but I want to know that...
I'm going to let Tom kind of give you the details, but to my knowledge, I think it's up to the property owner. So the property owner decides what they want to do, you know? So for instance, if you're talking about one specific property, and we say, yeah, we're going to have housing in there, but the property owner says that I'm going to keep it as an office building, don't be legal nonconforming. I think it's...
I mean, I'm trying to find out, are we going to avoid creating that situation by doing an overlay where that owner then has the option? Or are you going to propose a quote "R4" zone, and now you commit it? If your building burns down, let's just say, you want to rebuild now, are you going to... We're not going to allow a reconstruction of a nonconforming use.
Right.
Which in turn voids out the guy's insurance, because he's insured for a commercial building, and they're not... You know, insurance companies are not going to build, you know, parks, I mean, stuff like that. I mean, you run into a whole host of problems that, you know, that also values, you affect value property.
There are about five areas that are part of this Housing Element. There's the Old Town East and Old Town... Excuse me, Old Town West and Apartment Row. Those were already identified years ago, many of those places, as underutilized properties, which means that they could have more units on them. So those remain R3. Yeah. So those wouldn't be bothered by this at all. Then there is the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, which is through the center of town. And that is mixed use with... Part of it has to be housing if the Housing Element passes the way, you know, the direction is looking right now. And those would be... Have some increases to the dwelling units per acre as part of that, in order to fit the number that we have, the large number. Then, and now it's State Town Center Mixed Use Zone, not R4. The R4 would be over the Lamson property, which is where West Ed is right now in the fishing game, and Arrowhead, the back properties of Arrowhead. And those would be made possibly R4 if this passes, and those would have higher densities. And so those would have a different zone than what they are now. They're no longer... They would become housing. And so those would have a high density compared to what we've ever had before. And then the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, currently it's 30 dwelling units per acre. In order to meet it and, you know, not make the Lamson property and Arrowhead property, you know, real high density compared to what it already will be, they will have to rise... The density will have to rise in those areas as well. Now, which properties are you talking about, for instance, that would... Might be legal nonconforming?
We had a... Here's the mic. I'm sorry. Okay. It would be the properties along Cotella, along Cotella, south of Cotella, east of...
And those are not affected by this, other than Apartment Row?
And the mixed-use zone allows both. Town Center Mixed Use would allow an office building to continue.
Okay, that's what I want to make clear. I wasn't sure that... So we're talking specifically just about Lamson and about Arrowhead?
Well, for our... For our four. The Town Center Mixed Use currently allows housing. Once the plan is finished, at the densities that are being proposed...
Right.
If those densities are approved, if housing goes in on those sites, or a portion of those sites, it could be a commercial building that adds a floor of apartments above or behind. Both are allowed. And so the Town Center Zone, because it's a mixed-use zone, will not create legal nonconforming uses, because the Town Center Zone has a very broad range of permitted uses.
And so the... So those uses that are, let's just say, currently solely an office building, and if those were to change hands, want to be demolished, reconstructed, those owners would be allowed to do a single-use structure, office building. They don't have to now throw a second floor on for housing, et cetera. That's what I'm driving at.
If... If, if the, the, the state law has changed this cycle, the, the short answer is yes to your question.
All right.
It's unfortunately not, not a simple yes, because these, the inventory that we showed in the PowerPoint...
Right.
Assigns a limited number of units to a number of properties.
Right.
If those, if the, if one of the properties that has one unit in three of the affordable housing categories listed on it, and that building is an office building currently and remains an office building, and the owner wants to expand that office building and not build housing, the law now requires that the city find an alternative location for those three units. So it's called no, no net loss. Because of the way it's distributed throughout the Town Center properties, it provides the city with the most flexibility, because there isn't a large burden of a large number of affordable housing units on any one parcel with...
Does each parcel, is each parcel in the Town Center area identified and assigned a number of lower, lower, well, whatever, housing units that need to be...
Yeah, that's, can I have the...
Parcel by parcel.
Can I have the PowerPoint back, please?
Yeah. Yes. So I, I'd like for you, and I know this is not maybe going to answer your question or not, but we do have a Town Center Mixed-Use Presentation that will address that more in detail, you know, after this workshop.
Yes.
But yes.
I don't want to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
Good evening. Victor Soffelkannig. What is SCAG's definition of a unit? Does a four-bedroom carry the same weight as a two-bedroom?
Yes.
So a one-bedroom, same, same unit?
A studio, a, a studio is a unit, a five-bedroom is a unit. There...
Thank you. One once, one twice? All right. Nicole, Tom, Leslie, anything to add?
I thank everyone for coming.
Yes. All right, thank you for coming.
We will have a discussion about the Town Center Mixed-Use Zone coming up in the Planning Commission as well, which the Town Center is, is the part of the town that, that's, would change the most if people started building things there. This would be the, the area that would be the, the most changed to it. Oh, we have one more question.
You've designated the Lamson site, and given the, seems to me, the irrationality of the ARENA numbers, okay, for, you know, without taking into consideration, you know, each city's build-out, et cetera, et cetera. We have the base that's in our sphere of influence, and I think is technically within the city limits, I don't know if that's true or not. Why aren't we designating or quote, "planning" over the next, whatever time period we're in, ten years to 2019, that we designate part of the base, like just inside the main gate to the left, that nice big area that abuts the houses along Howard, the rear of houses? Also areas that are down by Target that are on the base, I mean, that are not within the crash zone and stuff like that. Why aren't we, or the area right next to Cottonwood Park across, you know, on Farquhar, where the old base housing used to be, where they had probably two-hundred units in there, that's completely vacant? Why aren't we looking at that and planning that? Since we don't have to do it, if there was ever a place in the city where we could do it, it would be starting with the base next to, next to Cottonwood and Cottonwood Park. Why aren't we including that in this? I mean, a lot of this is unrealistic, I mean, in, in the long haul. We all know it's not going to ever happen, but we'll plan for it anyway, and, but why not actually plan for it where it could, could be implemented and on the base?
Yeah, we, I, I don't know if Nicole wants to chime in on this, but we did use that as part of our appeal process. We asked if we could use the base as some of the land, and the, the state rejected that. They are really concerned that it's realistic, that something will be built on over the next six or seven years, and they, the, the base is not planning on going away or anything like that, so therefore, they would not accept that as a viable spot to put housing.
Right now, I was going to add that, the, the property that we identified is as realistic that we get that we could possibly build housing on there. So our conversation with the bases, the bases has no intention of going away. They actually had a Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting yesterday, RMAC, where the General, or the General Leeny, addressed growth at the base, several projects that they're doing out there. So when we go out there and identify potential housing during this sixth cycle, we have to do as much realistic planning as possible. Anything else? Well, again, we thank you for your time, your comments. We wrote down some notes here. Again, thank you. If you have any other, you know, sitting at home, and you have any questions or comments, the contact for us is Mr. Tom Oliver here, so please email him. And again, we wish you a good evening, and we encourage you to stay for seven o'clock, our Planning Commission, because we do have a Town Center Mixed-Use Presentation for that as well. All right? So, but thank you, and have a good evening.